All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, May 15, 2017. We're starting a little early tonight because we're having a special recognition of our volunteers. Since we don't have a secretary at this moment, I will take attendance. Anthony Amato.
Here.
Valerie Anderson. Alan Brown.
Here.
Greg Kava. Greg is here. Michelle Gora.
Here.
I'm here. Stephanie Kolnick. No? Jennifer Poty.
I'm here.
Jennifer's here. Lisa Rousch.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagley. And we do have a vacancy in Bridgewater at present, so Valerie and Stephanie are absent. All right, next, item two is Special Recognition of Our Volunteers. Dr. Constantino?
Yes. Can you hand me without the microphone? Do you want me to go again?
Yeah, if you wouldn't like to grab an apple.
Sure. I'll do this and then we'll take the picture a little bit. So, good evening, everyone. Once a year, we as a region honor our extraordinary volunteers. We have wonderful, wonderful parents and community members who help throughout our schools on a regular basis. And the principals every year get to choose one volunteer, and I, as a superintendent, get to choose, and this year I chose two. I couldn't decide. So, I don't know if they're all here, but I will start, and when your name's called, come on up, stand here, I'll read the nice words, and then, oh. Will somebody bring me maybe the little gifts over here, if you don't mind? Okay, great. So, I think Christine Malati is here, am I right? No, she's not. Never mind, sorry. Sarah Foreman? There we go. Come on up, Sarah. Okay, Sarah. How are you? Good. So, Sarah is the volunteer extraordinaire from Booth Free, and she is committed to the school and the Roxbury community, and it is always apparent. Sarah has served as the PTO president for the past two school years and has participated in countless Booth Free school and PTO activities. She has managed, juggled, and delegated very efficiently, ensuring programs and events run smoothly. The students can count on having Sarah serve them hot lunch several times each month. Sarah also keeps everyone well informed, as they can always count on receiving the BFS PTO update each week. We are very pleased and honored to recognize Sarah Foreman for her dedication to Booth Free School. Congratulations, Sarah.
Congratulations.
At the end, we'll take one with everyone. And we have goodies. So, you'll let me know if Christine Malati comes in. I don't think she's here yet. Okay, our next, we have some men. Isn't that great that we're honoring men also in the elementary schools? Ken Schultz from WPS. Come on up, Ken. So, Ken is being recognized as the volunteer extraordinaire from Washington Primary School. Ken has served as the WPS president for the last two years. Under his leadership and collaboration, he has created an enthusiastic and supportive parent system focused on enhancing the learning opportunities for students and providing positive family experience. Ken is forward-thinking, child-centered, and is always looking for ways to improve the work of the PTO. Ken volunteers his time at every activity and is available to support creative projects that make WPS shine. If you meet up with Ken and ask him how he's doing, he eagerly will reply, "Living the dream." It is this optimism and unwavering commitment to our school that makes his influence exceptional and greatly appreciated by WPS students, staff, and families. Ken, congratulations. Ken's family's here over there. There you go. Proud of daddy? Yeah. That's great. Christine Johnson is here. Come on up, Christine. Christine is the mother of Kelsey, class of 15, and 17 grad Paige. She has been involved in PTO for many years, currently serving as Vice President of the SVS PTO. Christine took on the thankless job of running the concession stand at the home basketball games, delighting the crowd with good candy choices and pizza. Behind the scenes, she coordinated food purchases, volunteers, setup, and cleanup. She has been a part of all aspects of PTO activities, sixth-grade socials, seventh and eighth-grade dances, Olympic Day, prom, promotion, and graduation receptions, and the scholarship committee. She also took over the staff appreciation luncheon this year, an event that is happily anticipated by all of Chapag. Christine, congratulations. Not yet. Okay, maybe she'll still come. Okay, I have, as I said, two volunteers from the district, and Julie King is not here yet, but Tim Loughlin is. Come on up, Tim. Region 12 recognizes Timothy Loughlin as one of our volunteer extraordinaires. Although Tim has only been part of the Region 12 community for two-plus years, he represents all that we want in our Region 12 citizens. Tim has been an active supporter of the AgSTEM program and has been active in communicating and advocating with Commissioner Melody Curry at DAS. Tim is also an active member of the Region 12 Building Committee and readily shares his expertise with the team. Tim and Kim's little boy Leo is just seven months old and will be a member of the Chapag class of 2034. Leo is here somewhere, I don't know where he's hiding. There he is. It is our great hope that Tim and the parents just like him continue to be members of the Region 12 community and support our efforts to provide the best educational program for all of our students. Kim, we're, Tim, we're assuming that one day you are going to be the board chair, just not yet, but we thank you for all of your service. Okay. Oh, okay, good. Okay, one second, we're going back. Okay. Ann Verbicus is here? There she is. Come on up, Ann. Ann is the mother of Haley, class of 13, Emma, class of 15, and 2017 grad Jack. Like Christine, Ann has been involved in PTO for many years and serves in another thankless job, treasurer of the SVS PTO. Ann coordinates the senior collage project, creating a wall of grad pictures that is enjoyed by all as they prepare for graduation day. Senior collage project, I apologize. Ann has also been part of all aspects of PTO activities, sixth-grade socials, seventh and eighth-grade dances, Olympic Day, scholarship committee, and prom, promotion, and graduation receptions. PTO meetings will not be the same without the wonderful volunteers from Chapag. Thank you so much, Ann. Okay, one more. I see. Julie King, come on up, Julie, and I see Julie's there with her husband and two sons. Region 12 recognizes Julie King as one of our volunteer extraordinaires. Julie has two sons, Wyatt and Wilson, both attending school at Chapag. She is an active parent in our region. Julie's background is in marketing, and she has assisted the region as we promote various activities. Julie is incredibly thorough and always calm under fire. She takes the reins of any job that needs to be done. She is dependable and has that can-do attitude. She really believes in Region 12 and supports our mission. For the past two years, Julie has been involved with the Minds in Motion program that we brought to our region. She was in charge of publishing and advertising the Minds in Motion program, as well as working to attract families and presenters to the conference. Her work was invaluable to make Minds in Motion a success. Julie also worked tirelessly with the SVS productions. She has been an integral part of the shows. She meets with Mrs. Harvison pre-show to discuss concepts for advertising in order to best represent the performance that we're sharing with the community. She shares ideas and layouts that are professional quality. She is always there to support the staff, cast, and crew. Julie has also been a big help with the real-to-open house tomorrow at Chapag. We cannot say enough about this wonderful woman and her family. We are beyond lucky to have her and her expertise working with Chapag Dramatics and the rest of our programs, and Julie King is certainly one of the region's best. Julie, thank you so much. Is that it? Did I get everybody? They're all gone? Oh, wait, let's see who's not here. Oh, the first. Malati, is she here yet? Christine? No? Okay, well, when she comes, we will certainly, you know, try to give it to her during the meeting, but again, I do want to thank all of our volunteers, and I want to thank your families. I see many of you have kids and husbands here and wives, and we know that it's so important to support our schools, and we know that it takes time. You really have to be dedicated to come out at night and take time away from your families, but we really do appreciate it, and everything you do has a direct impact on our students. So, thank you very much. We are going to take a group picture with the board. We like to do that right over here, and please, everyone else, have some snacks, and you're always welcome to stay for the board meeting, but if you don't want to, you're also welcome to leave. Okay, thank you.
The board would like to say congratulations. Thank you to all of you.
Okay, so come on up, volunteers, we take a big group picture. Four members come to, we take it all together, and the principal.
We try to be graceful.
That's right. Hey, Ann, I'm going to change into my swim trunks.
Come on, don't be shy. Come on, Ken, don't be shy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, go, go, look this way. Swish, swish, swishy, swishy, come on.
All right, guys, ready? Three, two, one.
I think we're good.
Okay, everybody, help yourself, somebody, help yourself, somebody.
It's not Christine.
Sarah.
I know.
Folks, all, please join us for some refreshments, please.
Like he needs a cookie.
Exhausting. You know, I've taken to the stage, and in a community theater.
Are you, Marianne, are you presenting with kids?
All right, you're next. You're next.
Just a stem. Okay, just a stem. Okay, good.
You're next.
Okay, good. Okay. Okay, good. Nice. They can sit there.
Okay. Because we have some special guests with us, can I have a motion to amend the agenda to make item seven the next item? It's been moved to second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, item seven, K through 12 STEM. Teresa DeBrito, Sheila Gambino, Marianne Zeller. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. We're really excited to be here. We have a lot to share with you. We really want to talk about the progress in science, technology, engineering, and math this year for our entire district. You may recall that last year, the State Department of Education adopted the Next Generation Science Standards, and with the new position of the K-5 STEM teacher led by Ms. Marianne Zoller, we were able to begin to actually start to teach lessons that are aligned to Next Generation Science Standards. So, we thought the best way for you to see how that has evolved is to see the kids in action, and they're going to teach you about the science they've been learning. So, I'd like to call up Ms. Marianne Zoller and her students, please.
I feel like I have little ducklings behind me, which is really how I feel every day, and I can't tell you how much fun I've had working hard, but so much fun every day to be in three, well, really, four buildings, work with K-5 kids with STEM. It's all new for them, it's all new for me, and it's hard sometimes to tell who's more enthusiastic about it. So, I have some first graders who, in a life science unit, learned about different types of pollinators, built their own, used mimicking fur, feathers, other materials. We didn't mimic the wind, but they had to move the pom-pom to the flowers so they would be pollinated. Our third graders in some physical science worked with magnets to explore and eventually build their own maglev trains, and our fifth graders in an environmental engineering unit cleaned an oil spill. All of the units have genesis in a literature selection, and generally speaking, the main character just happens to have a friend who's an engineer who can help them solve the problems. So, we constantly refer back to this story. So, if my first graders could go to their pollinator station, and they used everyday materials, clothespins, straws, pom-poms.
Welcome.
Our third graders can go to their maglev station, and our fifth graders about to step up and join you up here can go to the environmental oil spill cleanup. And really, I almost feel like if you would like to get up and just visit each and ask them any questions, that might be the best way for you to experience what they experience.
Is that what you want us to do, to go and visit each station?
I think you can do that for five minutes.
All right.
Parents, you're certainly invited to come also.
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 Is that what you want us to do, to go and visit each station?
I think you can do that for five minutes.
All right.
Parents, you're certainly invited to come also.
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 That's it, I can't help it.
Parents, you're certainly invited to come also.
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 I'm just going to wrap this up a little bit. If anybody has any questions from me or from any of our participants. You guys can start putting the stuff in the baggies. Frank, you can start putting the stuff in the baggies, because it's everywhere, right? You guys can do that. So, if you didn't get a chance to visit, again, the third grade learned about magnets, and they were electrical engineers with the technology innovation, and again, this year we only met once. Next year, when we include the Next Generation Science Standards into our typical science schedule, they'll be having more classes per week. Our environmental engineers are now cleaning up the mess that they just made, cleaning up an oil spill. Count on the fifth graders for helping out with that. And as you can, just put it on the back table for now, two hands. As you can see, I'm on the floor a lot. The kids are on the floor a lot. We try to get them as involved as possible. If you have any questions about any of the units, I'm happy to answer them for you. Michelle.
Did you say once a week that you normally?
I am in 19 classrooms every week.
Wow, that's amazing.
And then I work with, another component of my job is the tag component, and that brings me up here one morning a week.
All right, and then, the, is it a kit?
It is a kit.
I mean, did we purchase this?
They were.
For the STEM position?
Correct.
Or because of the next-gen science?
Actually, they'll be both, but they were initially, Dr. Constantino gave me a lot of the information out of the Museum of Science in Boston has an, engineering is elementary component, and theirs was the most comprehensive, the most engaging. Their stories were much more rich literature, more multicultural. They were a great starting point. So, the life and the physical science units had a lot of kits available. The earth science kits, not so much. That was me calling together a lot of things from many, many, many different websites and resources and speaking to people.
Okay. So, is it, do I understand it's, you're in classes one through five in three schools once a week?
K through five.
K through five, wow.
K through five. And then I, there are identified children in a talented and gifted program in each of our three elementary schools and up here at the middle school, so I do that, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you. No, I thank you because, I mean, you can see the enthusiasm that the kids have. Dr. Constantino has seen me on the floor. I have aprons that I wear into class because we get a little messy, but it's all good learning, and the kids.
continuous thinking. You can use objects, materials, technology, video, it's about constructivism, learning by making. If I construct meaning in what I create, then that's powerful learning. So there are no limits to a Makerspace, and you're going to get inside perspective on Shapog's Makerspace in just a few moments. The next introduction fits nicely with the Makerspace model. Because the elementary schools participate in the Invention Convention, which is a national competition, I am pleased to introduce Ms. Kalella, Burnham School Principal, and a 3rd grade student, Giselle Bezos, to share her invention.
Can she set it up on the table? Yeah, there you go. So I'm really thrilled to introduce-
You dropped some money.
Giselle, there you go.
Kathy, you dropped some money.
Behind you. Oh, I have to go shopping, here you go. I'm thrilled to introduce her because Giselle has done really well with her invention. But before I begin, I'm happy to say that the Booth and Burnham Invention Convention, Invention Team really had grown this year, we started last year, last year was our first year, we started it with Booth and we only had a handful of children, this year we had about 24 students that participated. And their inventions were really creative, innovative, I mean, they were just tremendous. And so I'm proud to say that Giselle not only won the local, she won a regional competition at WestCon, she also won, is one of the winners of the state competition from UConn, and she's off to Washington DC for the Nationals, and I am proud of her. And that's really huge, it's a huge deal. So I'm gonna pass this mic over to Giselle if she doesn't get too nervous, and she can talk about her invention.
Thank you. Giselle, you speak up so we can hear you.
My invention is the retainer container. A lot of kids have retainers to fix their overbite or to straighten their teeth out more. It becomes a problem when they sit down to eat and they need somewhere to put their retainer. They take their retainer out and they oftentimes put it in a napkin and it ends up getting thrown away. It costs their parents a lot of money to get a new one. But my invention fixes that problem, because when you sit down to eat, you take your retainer out, you open it up, you put it in, and then you close it. My invention also gives you chew-free hands to eat with. When you're all done eating, you open it back up, you take it out, you close it, and you put it back in your mouth. My invention also looks like a stylish piece of jewelry that kids would want to put on their wrist. You wear it on your wrist so when you eat, it keeps it from getting lost or getting thrown away in the trash. I had a prototype, but it didn't work because it was made of cloth and it didn't protect the retainer and you couldn't clean it. I also have some testimonials. You have no idea how many of our students' retainers I have had to dig for in the trash. That's by Ms. Kalella. It's tough telling parents how much a replacement retainer will cost them. That's by my orthodontist, Dr. O'Keefe. I move around and eat a lot and I need somewhere to put my retainer, so it's hard to forget. That's King Kong, the movie monster. So there you have it, a stylish way to keep your retainer safe and from getting thrown away in the garbage. It makes your parents happy and your kids happy, and it makes your parents' wallets happy too.
Congratulations, that's wonderful, good luck at the Nationals.
She did a great job, super, super.
Congratulations.
After Washington, she can go off to Shark Tank.
Beautiful.
So I see the money is all the money that the parents save.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. I'll talk to you afterward.
Thank you, Giselle, and thank you, Ms. Kalella. So that was just an example of wearable technology. If you were all wondering, what does that mean, because we offer a course here at Shapog? Giselle, we can't wait for you to get to Shapog. So we're going to continue with the theme of Makerspace, and at this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Gambino and some Shapog students to talk about what they've been doing here at the Cat Lab.
Hi, everybody, thanks for coming out, can you hear me? I don't know why I can't hear myself, but we were privileged to create our very own Makerspace this year at Shapog, it's right back there, you can see the cats through the window, and I was very excited that Trip came up with the name, we had actually a naming kind of brainstorm session, and the Cat Lab kind of stuck, it stands for Creative Advanced Technology. But those of you who know me well know that I have cats named Pixel and Java, who I absolutely love, they're my favorite thing in the whole world. So I was very excited to have the name of the Cat Lab. So we've stocked it with all kinds of really cool technology, and we actually got this idea a couple of years ago, we formed a committee of about nine to 13 teachers, kind of like faded in and out throughout the years, but we kept talking, the idea kept coming around and around again, and then two high school students came to me this year and said, "You know, we really need to do this, so we want to get involved, how can we get this going?" So we just went full forward with it this year, and it's been very successful, we usually meet Wednesdays after school, and we've done a lot of different projects that you're going to hear a little bit about. But we created a video for you, just so you, like, we could quickly get the idea across without staying till midnight tonight.
I'm sorry, Cat is again?
It's called the Cat Lab, for Creative Advanced Technology.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some people that most likely would come here, that they don't have the time or they don't have the materials at home, so it's gonna be very helpful if they want to do a project and they don't have the materials for it. Everything's about like technology and stuff, because you basically learn about the programming and coding, and sometimes you need to basically plan out what you're going to build, and you need to like design first, and you need to program, then you need to test, and that's a goal you can repeat for a while. So this right here is our UNO, it's the basic RVNO, it allows you to use our programming, program, to just create, and the best thing about the program is if you, it can verify your program and make sure the system can understand it, and if it doesn't understand it, it will tell you what's wrong, and it allows you to fix it, allows you basically teach yourself. So I have some things, you can hook up inputs, like a button or number pad, you can hook up outputs, like a speaker, LED, and servo. And then just basics, inputs and outputs, and then there is analog inputs, which basically are just a working, go through a range of different amounts, like the digital is just one to zero, and analog can be around 100 to zero. The breadboard is for prototyping, right now I'm starting a basic circuit, so I got the power hooked up, if I have positive or negative, but then you can hook it up to inputs on the board, there are long here, like for example, I'm hooking up the pin 13, so when I do a programming, I know that pin 13 is going to be the output, turn on my LED, and then if I grab, find the rate resistor, the rate resistance, I'll be able to complete circuit and connect it to the negative lead, creating a circuit that when I do a program like, did it all output on high, the LED will turn on, and did you output low, it will turn off. I've done it twice because they've been curious to me ever since I was a child, like wondering how they work, and ever since they found out how they work, I still want to develop those skills, because of all the creativity you can have and you just get unlimited, basically. For example, if you had a high enough tech sensor, like a PPS, you can make a tracker to track where you went and how you did, and then there's accelerometers, sensors, so you can detect how fast you're going, so if you're going running, you can find out how fast you are, and it can help you adjust your schedule depending on how much, so you can have plenty of time, and it could act as a reminder and stuff, could program something to remind you if you forgot something too. So what I'm looking forward to in Makerspace is to allow people like with basic, with a skill they want to learn or that they want to work on, like for instance, programming and building with the RVNO, allow them to just learn it and be free and explore.
Right, so Trip is one of our very active members in the Makerspace, and I really wanted to bring him tonight to celebrate his excellence, not only in the Makerspace, but I don't know how many of you know somebody who has won the Student of the Month Award four times in his tenure as a Shapog Middle School student, I think that's a record, so please give him a round of applause for that too. And he has a couple more words to say about the Makerspace, and also he brought a project that he just shared at the State Legislative Office Buildings as part of a team that we brought there, Mrs. Pitt and I went there with two teams of students and they presented different projects, so he brought a project to share with you that he built for that particular purpose.
But Trip, just make sure you speak up so we can hear you, thank you.
So for this project, it was for the aging in places for people who would rather stay home than go to the Makerspace, then go to like Sina Centers, I'm all over the place. So like people who would rather stay home, usually have like arthritis, so they struggle doing similar things, like opening a jar. The machine that I have right there, it's designed to help out with it, it's a prototype, so it doesn't work 100% of the time, but at least it functions properly and it's a great idea for helping people out. So for this, it's basically a simple script that basically opens up the jar, let me just, yeah. So for this, so for this, it's basically a simple, simple just thing, you just hold it, and then when you press the button, it slowly opens it, it's a prototype, so it's not the strongest, but eventually will break the seal on the jar, and then, once it's loose enough, you're gonna easily unscrew it, so it just breaks the seal.
So my question to Trip was, why didn't we use, he's using something called servo motors, which can step into things, and I asked him, "Why didn't you use a regular motor?", and his response was, "Well, the wires, if it just keeps going continuously, we have to fix the problem of the wires getting twirled around and around and around."
And servos, the best thing about them is they're very specific, if they use a regular motor, it could get stuck and burn them out, and the best part about them, they're decently strong, and they're very precise. So some of the projects we're doing, like, sometimes it's not all electronics, sometimes it's just little project that we can do, like sometimes we'll make like healthy smoothies and things, and then also, we also made Belgium waffles.
Great. I wish he had some samples, we could give them out to you.
Next time.
Thank you. Congratulations, excellent work.
Thank you, Trip, for coming in, for sharing your amazing work. So next on the agenda, we also were so lucky this year to participate in another STEM opportunity, which Mr. Motto brought to us from his company, and he contacted me one day and said, "Hey, we have this great company, this great contest that my company sponsors, would you be interested?", and I said, "Absolutely, this sounds great." So we got involved in a video game competition with his company, and at the time, it was called CSC Code, so don't be confused when you see the games, because it's, they've just changed the company name to DXC, so the student games were created while it was still CSC codes. And we actually have two of the, two teams who won first and second place in the state of Connecticut, and Mr. Motto was not on the judging committee, I just wanted to make that clear. So I just wanted to share a little bit of information about the contest first, and then I'll call up some of the teams to, the two teams to share their great work. Alright, so Mr. Motto, would you like to say a couple words about your company?
Not too many.
No, just DXC is a global information technology company. As Sheila said, we started the contest, it was a CSC charitable foundation that sponsors events like this every year, one of our other big ones is with the Lego Corporation Building Robotics. We actually merged with Hewlett-Packard two days, I think, after the contest was over, so we had to rebrand everything, that's why the confusion. But we do these-
So next on the agenda, we also were so lucky this year to participate in another STEM opportunity, which Mr. Motto brought to us from his company. And he contacted me one day and said, hey, we have this great company that, this great contest that my company sponsors, would you be interested? And I said, absolutely, this sounds great. So we got involved in a video game competition with his company. And at the time, it was called CSC Code. So don't be confused when you see the games because it's, they've just changed the company name to DXC. So the student games were created while it was still CSC Codes. And we actually have two of the, two teams who won first and second place in the state of Connecticut. And Mr. Motto was not on the judging committee, I just wanted to make that clear. So I just wanted to share a little bit of information about the contest first and then I'll call up some of the teams to, the two teams to share their great work. All right, so Mr. Motto, would you like to say a couple of words about your company?
Not too many.
No, just DXC is a, is a, is a global information technology company. As Sheila said, we, we started the contest, it was a CSC charitable foundation that sponsors events like this every year. One of our other big ones is with the Lego Corporation Building Robotics. We actually merged with Hewlett Packard two days, I think, after the contest was, was over. So we had to rebrand everything, that's, that's why the confusion. But we, we do these things a lot. Again, we do it on a global basis, so this contest that you're gonna hear was a global competition. It was broken down by countries and within the states, by states. And we were entered into the Hartford region, which is basically the state of Connecticut. We, if, you'll see some of these things, and I'm not gonna, I'm gonna try not to steal your thunder. But as the kids were showing, when we had the award ceremony and they were showing what you'll see here in a minute, of how they were using the tool, how they were coding, the challenges, how they overcame their challenges. But what we try to do here is to try to, what Sheila does day in and day out, is to try to expose young minds to STEM. And what I thought was the home run is when one of, one of the teams said, I'll never look at anything quite the same again. And as he was, and he had just and his teammate then said, I have my favorite video game, I think it was Minecraft. And he said, I can't imagine how many lines of millions of lines, of billions of lines of code there must be in a game that's three dimensional, that can do this and do that, when it took how hard it was just to do this. So for me, that was the, the, the home run, that those kids who, who will never look at anything quite the same again, that's the expansion, that's the appreciation, the curiosity that, that really drives this. So I, I thought it was great, absolutely great.
We, we loved the contest and we will participate again. We plan on just keeping this as long as the company is sponsoring it, we will get students in there. But also, Mr. Motto was able to see what it was like to come in and be a teacher for the day because we had a code in for all of the students involved. And he came in and coded right along with us. Like he came in and did some, some flow charts with the students and brainstormed with them and asked them questions about their games. So that was really awesome too. So thank you so much for bringing this to our school and just for having us participate. We had a lot of fun with it. So I'm just gonna brush down here, this was the slideshow from the award ceremony, which you can see the whole presentation from the award ceremony online on our YouTube channel. But I just wanted to just explain a little bit. We have, the objective of the game that the students had to create was to get the employees to learn about the clear values, which are very much like the Chapag learner outcomes above me. So we did some work with comparing the two and the students realized that they're really not all that different. And we talked about the importance of having standards and having morals and ethics and, and communicating with your customer and having everybody in the organization be on the same page to communicate that clear, consistent message to customers or to stakeholders. So the students worked on Scratch, which is developed by MIT to keep people, young people interested in coding. It's very creative, it's very colorful, but the, what goes on behind the scenes is real computer programming. It's used from K to college, kindergarten through college. It's a very, very fascinating program, it's awesome. I love teaching Scratch. So we had eight teams, twenty-four students participate. And two of our teams are here to share their games briefly with you about the games that they won. So I'd like to call up Owen Hutchings and Stanley Ambrusso. And I think Connor Ross could not make it tonight. So they'll come up and share their game and tell you a little bit about their game. They won first place in the state of Connecticut.
Same thing, boys, just make sure you speak up so we can hear you.
I'm Stanley.
I'm Owen Hutchings.
And this is our game CSC Spooks.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Uh, our game is CSC Spooks.
Thank you.
All right, let's begin. So you start the game and the phone is ringing and it is your boss calling you. Crap, uh. Okay. So this is the first like question of the game. And if you answer it a certain way, it will just take you to a completely different area. You will eventually make it back to the full game. And because we're gonna try to show the full game, we will answer no. And then you get taken to prison for not helping your boss.
Um, so basically in the prison is you get asked questions about, you know, which, what is defining, whether it's clear values or Chapag values. And basically you don't have hints until you really get out into the main level. So, so it asks you a set of three questions. And also, this is a good way to get yourself up with points and also, you know, really start building. And when, if you complete all three of them, you move on, I think, isn't it? If you answer the last one incorrect?
I think the last one is the only one that really matters.
Yeah, the last one's pretty much the only one that matters. So if you get incorrect, you restart?
Or I think you just have to like wait for a little bit.
Yeah, you have to wait for a little bit. Um, so answer this one?
Okay, so this is the question that if you answer this wrong, you will, you'll pretty much just have to wait on a black screen for thirty seconds? Okay, uh, I'm just gonna answer it wrong just to show it. So, sure. And then we just have to wait.
So basically while we're waiting, uh, I think, well, it was, these are for the end, but uh, one thing I really enjoyed about this game was just being able to make it with my team and the code in, just the whole experience of it. It was, it was a lot of fun and I would definitely do it again.
And now we get back to the main game. So he, he helps you out throughout the game. And right now he tells you that if you press space, you can see the clear values to help you out. And to continue, we just have to click on him. And then I'm gonna say, I am not ready. And then this is just a good time to study the clear values. Okay, now we can continue. Okay, and this is the first ghost that will like ask you questions that you have to answer. So there are five clear values. This doesn't always happen. So answering call decision, citizenship is from the Chapag core values. So I will enter in. And then the answer for this one is results. And if I ever wasn't sure, I could click out of the text box and just hit space to see the clear values.
Um, one thing about this game that we were really trying to fix is sometimes you'd just be typing on the keyboard or something on our laptops and we'd accidentally click the, um, the mousepad, so it'd click out of the text box. And when we're typing, we'd click the S button. And anything that was going on, it just restarts the beginning with all the stuff. So it was pretty chaotic. So if we had more time, we'd definitely fix that.
Okay, so, and as was said before by Mrs. Gambino, this was, uh, this game was made before the name change. So CSC does not stand for that. Stands for. Oh, yeah, there, there's a secret level in the game. And there's the first level, or there was outside of a school and it said school district nine instead of twelve. This is a hint to the secret level where you have to press the, the number nine on the keyboard.
And as you can see on this level, in the tree, all the way over to your left, is a number nine. So that's also kind of a hint, we leave little hints pretty much in every level. And there's one of them, it's by the big wall where you first learn how to, you know, click the space bar to get your, um, hints. Uh, it, it was like, isn't it like the ninth brick up?
Yeah, the ninth brick.
Yeah, the ninth brick up.
The ninth brick on the top row.
Yeah.
What he said, there was another hint to pressing the number nine. Okay. So. Leadership? That is another thing. We set it up so when you answer one of the ghost questions, it'll take you to the next level. But sometimes you'll answer that question and you'll be taken to the winner's screen. And there's still one ghost left. And, and now that we've finished that, I'm going to show you the secret level by pressing the number nine.
Oh, it's not rainbow up there.
He's also changing colors, but it's not showing up on the bigger screen for some reason.
Um, the hardest thing really about making this game was perseverance through all these challenges. It was getting very tough at sometimes, you know, doing the coding. You'd have to go through all the lines of code to find that one little mistake. So it was very tough and it was just painstaking.
How long did it take you for beginning to end?
From beginning to end, it took us about, what would you say, six weeks about? But, yeah, about six weeks. I mean, that includes the code in, but in each day. But we were on a, a skip schedule, so every other day we'd have it. And then we'd drop a period, so sometimes we'd drop that class. Yes, sometimes we see you one day. So what we're gonna put up next is an example of our code. So Owen go to, that's just for one, that's just for the telephone in the beginning. Those lines of code, just to get it to ring and then say what we needed it to say. Uh, show him one of the ghosts. And then this is just for one little ghost during our game. You, you can see it's quite a bit of code for one little character that you see maybe once throughout the whole game. Oh, yeah, and this one is for the friendly little ghost that you see in the beginning. He may, he may not have a lot of really speaking parts or seem a lot, except for in the top corner. But he does have quite a bit of code.
There's a lot of spinning.
Yeah, well, also when he's not spinning. And the prison guard, that's his coding for asking the questions and stuff like that.
Thank you very much, congratulations, boys, great job.
And in second place, we have the second place team winners here also. Madison Duski, Annie Cuck, and Taylor Juro could not be here tonight also.
Hi, everybody, how you doing tonight? Good? I'm Madison.
Yeah, speak up, girls.
I'm Annie.
And our, the other third of our group couldn't be here tonight, but was a very vital person in this game making process. First of all, we brainstormed ideas. In order to enter the contest, we had to weave in the clear values of DXC and our own Chapag core values. We came up with about thirty ideas, but the class is mainly comprised of boys. So we decided to go with an idea that showcased a girl as the main character, girl power. It also came to our attention that a lot of gamers are boys. So we wanted to break the stere, uh, break the stereotype and make a name for ourselves in the gamer world. The idea that we chose to base the game on follows. Abby bought a new sparkling white CSC shirt, but the company got sold out, so she had to buy another one that said DXC. She wore it to school the next day. When she got out of lunch, there was a food fight. To save her new white shirt, she had to avoid the fortune cookies. She is also allergic to gluten. PS, the taco shells are gluten free. If she hit any other food, she gains one point. If she hits the fortune cookies, she will have to answer a question correctly in order to keep her score. Help save Abby's shirt and avoid gluten. Uh, so right now he hit a fortune cookie, so it's stating the clear values of DXC. And after this is all said, it will come up with a question that if he answers correctly, he will gain and, he will keep all his points and keep playing the game. If he answers it wrong, he will lose all his points and start over. Good. As you can see, he gained another point and he's keep on playing the game. We had a couple glitches with this when the fortune cookies would just stay there because there was fortune cookies that would fly around everywhere and go crazy. And then there was other ones that would stand there and ask the questions and they would just stay there.
We also had trouble with the fruit because it was like not coming back after we hit the fortune cookie.
He answered it wrong, so his points went back to zero and he's starting the game over. And you can see the fortune cookie got stuck there, which was one of our glitches that we can't seem to fix. So anyway, what was the most fun thing about making the game? Well, the whole process was generally fun all around. One fun part about making the game was creating the backstory. We picked a costume, which is just an animated person, and got to fully create the character we wanted and thought fit the role. There was also a code in held throughout the school day. During the day, we finished all the last minute details and little fix up to the game. That was all fun, but skipping math and science wasn't too bad either. It was also fun working with my friends and my amazing teacher, who I'd also like to thank for believing in all of us when all we had was a few ideas scribbled onto a piece of chromed up paper. Thank you.
Given more time, we, well, given more time, we would have made some changes. One change is that we would have made it so we had more difficult questions, but we put in one more to answer since we have no control over what the user puts, puts in for his or her answer. This is a smarter way to program to have less options over users input and lessen the chance of the user getting the question incorrect. Another change we would have made is that we would have added more food. So it was more difficult to avoid the bad food. We would have considered that all of these options, if we had more time, to continue our work on the game. The hardest part about creating the game was getting the correct script for the fortune cookie. We solved this by deleting all the fortune cookies except for one. We had to add a dummy, so when we repeated the trial on the other fortune cookies, it would work.
Thank you, girls, for sharing your amazing game. And I wanted to also show you just really quickly.
Congratulations, girls, great job, thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. All right, so I just wanted to show you the. Alright, so I just wanted to show you the prizes that um DXC bestowed upon the students. So Madison won a SnapCircuits Extreme Electronics Kit. Annie won a Celestron Astromaster Retracting Telescope and Taylor won a Celestron Astromaster Retracting Telescope. And also for um first place, Stanley won a Celestron 500 Times Power Microscope. And Owen won the same, the Celestron 500 Times Power Microscope. And Connor won the Thames and Cosmos Chem C 3000 Kit, which he's very excited about. So thank you very much again to DXC for bestowing these amazing prizes to our students. And thank you again for bringing that great contest to our school. So um with that being said, I would just like to invite you, we're gonna leave the Makerspace open if you'd like to just like take a walk through later and also invite you next year, watch out on the calendar to see if even you would like to come to some activities that we have in the Makerspace, we'll be doing a lot of things with electronics. And we have four teachers um staffing the Makerspace at during different months throughout the year, next year. So just keep your eyes open for cool activities.
Sheila, thank you, wonderful job. Michelle? Sheila?
Sheila, there's a question for you.
I just wanna make sure I understand the Makerspace. So our student, the students that are using it are all part of one of the, one of your classes or they're part of a club?
They're not actually part of a class, um they're really, anybody who comes to me and says, hey, I wanna check out the Makerspace. We gave some presentations um during one of Mr. Dyer's um walkthroughs during advisories. We explained what it was and we said, for more information, come see me. So we gave students tours as they were interested in them. And we've had people um like Trip and middle, a lot of middle school students interested in building different things. But we've also had a lot of senior project students come and try to build things for their senior projects and also um things even for home. We had one student a couple weeks ago who came to me and said, I really would like to build a LED light for my fish tank that won't keep me up at night. So he came in and we taught him how to solder and then he independently worked through creating that and he has it now on his fish tank. He just brought me a picture of it. So the idea is that you can use the space to create, the tools are in there like we um shared in the video. If you don't have stuff to use at home or if you just wanna try something out without a big investment, you can come and try it out here and then decide whether you want to pursue pursue it or not.
That's fantastic.
And there's tons of stuff in there, like sewing machines and electronics and food, of course. Um we made essential oils, we made ADD cologne and that really was a hot item. Every student in the school wanted that cologne. It's made from cedar, vetiver, lavender, and vanilla, if anybody's interested, just email me.
That's amazing. So um I'm just wondering, where do the materials come from and do you need donations of?
We have gotten a couple of small donations, just electronics, equipment, Sue, thanks Sue. And um things that we would like to take apart, so if you have like things, we don't want it to look like a junkyard though. So you know, small things that you want to take apart, we've taken a couple of things apart and repurposed components from things that we've taken apart. Donations for craft materials would be great, any kind of fabric, yarn, or anything like that that we can use for wearable technology. Next year, we have a class in wearable tech, so we're, you know, hoping to do some really, some heavy duty, more heavy duty stuff with that. But we also were funded by Dr. Cosentino. Um we put in a budget requisition last year and we we've been buying some supplies for it this year also. And we asked for a little bit more for next year, just to continue that. So I think um in order to address the problem of running out of consumables, we talked about briefly, Mrs. Gall and I talked about possibly charging just a an admission fee for the ones that are high consumable classes. So students might come and pay two dollars or three dollars or something for the materials that they would use. But we wouldn't be like, we wouldn't be keeping the money like they would just be paying for the materials they were using.
I think also if you put together um like a wishlist of things that you could use.
Right, that's a great idea, I actually just saw another Makerspace had a website for a school and they had a wishlist for their school Makerspace.
Put it in the newsletter.
I think that's a great idea.
You know, I I'm sure lots of us have um some electronics and fabric.
We definitely um are planning on building the website next year when we have four people staffing it. We really wanted to pilot it this year and see if people were gonna be interested in coming, it is pretty popular. And we have used it in a couple of classes also and I had one teacher today come to me and say, how do I do this? How do I go in there and like bring a whole class in there and what do I do in there? So I think it's gaining a little bit of momentum now.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
So as you can see, every child's passion can be realized in a Makerspace. Um I do wanna thank the families, um the children for being here. Uh I know that you wanna get ready for school tomorrow, um so thank you so much, have a great night. And and thank you again for all of your support and for being here this evening. So what you may not know is that there are Makerspaces for adults, they're throughout the state. You just bring your material, they have all the tools, power tools. You can create whatever you would like to create, I mean, they're open on Saturdays, they're open in the evening. So even adults can have their passions realized in a creative manner. I also wanna share with you that we have reached out to the community. Um the State Library uh offers assistance to help local libraries create their own Makerspaces. And here in our district, the Burnham Library already has a Maker Lab. Um but I have spoken to the directors of the library in Washington, the Gun Memorial Library, and the Roxbury Library so that we can have a community effort so that when school's not in session in the summer, on Saturdays in the evening, that the students have a place to go right in their own communities. So we are planning to organize a Materials Drive so that people can donate items um and money if they if they choose so. So that's something that is exciting that's happening in the community. Some more exciting news, you're not gonna want this meeting to end tonight. Last year, I applied for a computer science grant. And I'm thrilled to report that Region 12 is a part of eleven districts in the state of Connecticut that were granted this grant and so that the teachers will be trained. The curriculum was written out of University of California. And um the counselors and the teachers are trying to recruit students to actually take the course. So we're we're hoping that the computer science pathway starts to gain some momentum um for our students. But I wanted to share that because that's exciting news as well. Yes, question? Computer sciences, programming, computer science, yeah. High school, yes. Boolean logic, problem solving, yes. Yep, so we're excited about that as well. Another thing I wanted to share with you is that the three elementary schools had also requested to have Makerspace Labs. And so it was put in Dr. Cosentino's budget. And so for next year, we're going to have Makerspace Labs in each of the three elementary schools as well. Uh the principals have gone out to a training along with a group of adults from the elementary schools. And so um this is just, it's really just gaining momentum and we're really very excited about the progress. In transitioning to next generation science standards, you saw Ms. Zoller share with you some of the lessons that she's already having kids participate in. Another part of the budget was a program improvement request. Um about six years ago, I came before you and asked you to support the engineering program at the middle school. Um the Project Lead the Way curriculum and Ms. Gambino had, came on board to teach um that particular program. And I was really ecstatic that they extended it down to elementary, beginning in kindergarten. So we are going to next year implement in grades K through four, the Project Lead the Way um curriculum that aligns with next generation sh- science standards. Grade five will still have the CMT Science Test next year, but they will be included the following year. Um and that focuses robotics. I do have a sample of the units and I do wanna pass that out to you so you can see what our elementary students will be experiencing in regards to next generation science. There are four domains in the new science standards. They are life science, physical science, earth and space, and engineering. So if you look at the chart in front of you, there are four units identified for each grade. So for kindergarten, an engineering unit, they're gonna be exploring design, structure, and function. And they're gonna design their own paintbrushes. Another unit is pushes-pulls, so they'll be looking at physics. And they're going to design um moving rocks for a new swing set and how to get that done. Again, structure and function, a third unit in kindergarten, life science, this is biomedical. And so they're examining organs of the human body, they'll investigate structure and design a cast for an injury. Animals and algorithms, this is a computer science unit. So they're really gonna be learning about sequential nature of computer programs. And they're going to be able to manipulate animals in their natural habitats through animation in a computer. So that's how you would follow each of these examples. I just wanted to give you an overview of what our kids are gonna be experiencing in the future. Any questions on that? Okay, the next thing I'd like to pass out to you is the pathway for science for the secondary level.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
While you're handing that up. So this is the K five, these are the next gen science standards.
This is the K five Project Lead the Way program that's really focused on the science with engineering embedded in every unit.
So this is an addition to?
This will help us transition to next gen science. And so we are going to map out all the standards and we may be using current um units that Ms. Zoller has developed. But we wanted to have a platform that we know um is industry-based. And Project Lead the Way does their research, they do um a phenomenal job with the curriculum that they put together. And so we're very excited about being able to offer this to our elementary school students.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, so in in draft form in front of you, the sequence we have based on next generation science standards, um the first course would be Earth and Space with an honors challenge option. Then biology, and then lots of options beyond that. We have chemistry. We also have um half-year courses, chemis- concepts of chemistry, excuse me, and energy systems. So if a student doesn't want to take the chemistry course that we have been offering, we have broken it out um for pacing and this might be a better option for some students. And that's why we have Concepts of Chemistry, half-year um course, and then Energy Systems is another half-year course. Anatomy and Physiology, AP Bio, um Physics or AP Physics. You'll notice that we're offering AP Chemistry next year as well. We still have Environmental Science as an option. And all the courses with asterisks can um be taken concurrently with Chemistry if a student wanted to double up on Science. Looking ahead, we're hoping, um I'm hoping, in within two years to be able to offer uh AP Computer Science and AP Statistics. So that's where we're headed with STEM in the district.
Thank you very much, Teresa, are there any questions? Wonderful report tonight, thank you, very comprehensive. Tony?
Teresa, uh is it uh is it literal the way you've had this laid out that chemistry is a prereq to AP Chem?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is, and that is a recommendation by the College Board.
Anyone else? Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, again, appreciate it. I'm gonna exercise my executive authority and I'm gonna move on to item eight and then we can go back to our regular agenda. Item eight, tag Mary Ann Zoller. I didn't mean to be flip, we could make a motion to amend the agenda again, but the lady is here, well.
And I'll I'll be very brief. I work with, I'm fortunate to work with children in each of the three elementary schools who've been labeled talented and gifted. And also three middle school students. Uh over the course of the year, we found out that really, once they're seventh grade and beyond, the curriculum is differentiated for their talented and gifted and next year, we're gonna keep it at three-six because it was hard to find time out of their busy academic schedule to meet with them. But with the elementary children and the middle school children this year, they became involved in a Wordmaster Challenge, which is a nationally recognized program, about a quarter of a million students across the country compete in it. There are three meets, um they learn very challenging vocabulary and build analogies with it. Especially the third and fifth and sixth grader, uh fifth, third and fifth grader did really, really well. Like a couple of perfect scores. Really builds high critical thinking skills. Also, all of my um kids that I work with, your kids, um entered into the ASAP Young Writers. So we did some writing work with them. Right now, they're doing mapping of their learning journey through the Seesaw app that a lot of the schools are using. Um I'm using it in the fifth grade also. So we meet for a half hour a week, it's very individualized to what their interests are and what they want to accomplish. And I'm looking forward to continuing it again next year.
Alright, thank you, any questions for Mary Ann? About how many students total participate in the program? It's grades right now, three through?
Three through, now it's three through eight, six kids.
Six.
But um I'm, we're looking at screening children at, in third grade so that we do a more careful examination because kids can slip through and we don't really realize some of the potential. And now, having been in all the schools and all the grades, you can see this glimmer in a kid and you're like, oh, this this kid's got a lot of potential here. Things outside the box. So I I know that that's something we're looking at doing.
And you said next year, you're gonna cut back, it's gonna be grades three through six?
Yes, because once they get beyond sixth grade, their schedules are already differentiated with accelerated courses. And even during the advisory period, like I come in an hour early to meet with one kid this year.
Okay.
Because that's what works for his schedule.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much, thanks for all your great work.
Oh, I have a blast, thanks very much.
Alright. Alright, back to our agenda then, item three, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to address the board? Yes, ma'am. State your name and where you're from, please.
Good evening, Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater. Um just wanted to follow up, uh I know it's on your agenda this evening. And in February, I came to you and gave you a presentation um about some of our marketing efforts and specifically about some of the challenges we were having as one of our regional schools and asked you for our urgent help. As I relayed then, we had a small amount of success with the tuition and proposal. However, we had seen much more success through our efforts for SVS from New Milford when tuition was lowered. As you know, we're finding out the prospective parents for the high school market are very different from those for the elementary market. We've had twelve families tour since the release of our incentives, that does not include our open house. That's an impressive number of families looking to make a dramatic change for their own families, but we need more ways to be able to compete and attract them. As I relayed to you then, as these families have said, and and the number is just too high, especially for families who would like to send multiple children for multiple years in our regional system. In the comparison schools that I showed you back in February, I have since learned that those schools are also doing deals with their tuitions depending on how much, depending on those families, and they're even lower than what they were originally listed at. In addition, higher-priced schools such as Montessori in the northern area are also doing deals. Our competition is stepping up. And since we started our advertising on social media, all of the other area schools have followed suit. Just a few days ago, Montessori released the information that they will be sending a bus for easy transportation from New Milford stu- from from New Milford to Montessori. That is our key New Milford market. I am hopeful that you can. I am hopeful that you can look through this and see a larger strategic vision of how we get families here for the long term into this region, as well as giving ourselves some positive press. This is a critical time for the northwest corner of the state. Everyone is putting skin in the game, from Region One to Montessori to our Bridgewater competitors that are right over the bridge. And I hate to be very blunt, actually, I don't, I'm pretty blunt, but, but if you don't step it up, you're going to be left in the cold with three towns that'll suffer as a result. I've heard a few unfounded excuses for why we can't do this, ranging from, we think that maybe Sherman may not like this, which has yet to be confirmed and really doesn't apply, because they're a high school, not an elementary school in the market. Another one is, what is the other one? Oh, that it hasn't worked yet, so maybe it just won't work at all, but that's counterintuitive. We had asked you to tweak it to make it lower. Even Mayor Gronback, when he had a discussion with First Selectman Reed, had even said, even though he understood that we were trying to poach his students, he also knew intuitively that our number had to be lower to get them. I understand you have concerns, however, certain specifications can be put on this, such as if the class gets too full, or it could be temporary, it could be a trial effort, those would all be good problems to have. This is very similar to the AgSTEM model, but at the elementary level. We have a town meeting this Friday, as I'm sure you're all aware, and we have many residents that are gravely concerned about our school and the latest changes. Our initial legal opinion seems to show that the latest configuration is a change to our regional pact that we made with you. Residents are also greatly concerned about whether the board's and administration's interest is aligned with ours. This show of support this evening could help demonstrate the willingness to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board? All right, thank you. Next, item four, consent agenda. Item 4.1, which is the annual district budget meeting, May 1st, 2017, and the minutes of the business meeting thereafter on May 1st, 2017. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, seeing no one, the consent agenda's approved. Item five, report of the chair. Just want to say that congratulations to us and thankful for the people of the three towns that our budget was passed. Good news for us, other towns are, not all towns are experiencing that passing of a budget on the first try, so congratulations, and I think it was a good budget. Item six, superintendent's report.
Yes, hi, everybody. Just a couple of things to mention. We do have a Realtor Open House tomorrow, 9:30 to 11:30, and we have sent out invitations to over 60 Realtors, and we are hoping for a nice turnout, but certainly the first of many open houses that we're trying to do. Anyone who would like to come, you're more than welcome. So that's 9:30 tomorrow morning. We do have our spring concerts coming up, so if you are available, tomorrow night is the middle school, the 17th is the high school, Booth is May 18th, and Burnham is May 22nd. WPS already had it, and it was a wonderful, wonderful concert. We do have two resignations, Mark Dinacola, who is an assistant at Booth Free, and Catherine Sokowski, who is a para at Chapag. And I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you. Item nine, action items, to consider, if appropriate, approve revisions to the 2016-17 school calendar. Dr. Castillo?
Yes, we have rectified this problem in the future, but this is the last year that we need you to just vote to make the second-to-last day of school a half-day for students only, not staff, just students. So that would be June 22nd is already the last day, and that is already a half-day of school, but we are asking that June 21st, you make that half-day of school just for students. That's this year.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I move we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? To making June 21st a half-day for students. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just while we're on that subject, just to confirm, what is the high school graduation date?
It's a Saturday, I believe it's the 17th at 10:00 a.m., yes, 10:00 a.m., June 17th
for the high school, and then the middle-school promotion is June 22nd at 6:00. Is it 6:00 o'clock?
Seven.
Seven? Okay, we'll check the time, but it is June 22nd.
All right, thank you. All right, item, next item, 9.2, tuition change. Is there anybody who wants to take the lead on this?
Well, I guess it's me.
Alan?
I guess it's me. We had this conversation two weeks ago, and there were a lot of questions, and I think we've had time to come up with answers, so I'd like to, I mean, I'm ready to make the same motion, but then there was a, there was an interesting email that we all got today about parents who are sending their kids to Chapag, who would like the $5,000 rate to extend to them as well. Now, we had obviously already talked about K-5 being switched to 5,000, but they actually discussed 5,000 being extended to, as we've said, the number of students we have that are in Chapag as well, and I guess the numbers, I forget, but there's more kids at Chapag that are at the elementary schools who are taking advantage of this at the moment. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be even broaching this if it weren't for the response to the issue of the original K-5 request being linked to the Sherman negotiations so carefully. I felt that that was a completely separate issue, because the Sherman negotiations were for high school students, and that we were talking about a reduction in rate for K-5. But if we have to come to terms with the effect on Sherman and assuage anyone who has concerns about that, maybe we should be talking about K-12 at 5,000, because clearly, if we feel that Sherman is involved anyway, we might as well give a break to all these classes anyway. So I'm not sure what kind of a motion to make on this, but I think maybe we could talk about some of the issues that we've had, and then decide whether to make a motion asking for K-5 reduction to 5,000 or a K-12 reduction to 5,000.
Yeah, if I may, I'm glad you haven't made a motion yet. Michelle, it's my understanding, there was a meeting with the three First Selectmen and the superintendent, Michelle, you were present? Could you report to us, give us an overview of what came out of that meeting?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and I've...
That was last week, was that, or earlier?
Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday.
Last week, Wednesday. And so, and after that, I've done a little bit of research and thinking, and so, please bear with me, I don't usually talk a lot, but I have, I want to hear what everyone has to say, because I've been struggling with this. So to start, the three First Select people had a meeting on Wednesday, and it was at the request of the board to get the input from all the towns. We decided to table the motion until we got their input. And I guess the, to cut to the chase of the beginning, neither Barbara nor Mark support the lowering of the tuition to 5,000 or 5,500, both have been on the table, and we can talk about that. So then, there was a conversation and discussion. Curtis was explaining that it's, you know, no additional cost, because we're just filling an empty seat, to which I, which I can, I understand and agree, I get that, and that's why, you know, I'm really thinking carefully about this. I explained to him that that's the exact, that it's difficult to explain to the taxpayers, and that's the exact same argument that we've had with the AgSTEM, you know, that the 10, because people in the towns have been complaining, why do we only get 10,000, it costs 30,000 to educate a child here? And we explained that the 10,000 that they bring in covers their expenses, and the rest is they're sitting in an empty seat and don't incur additional cost, to which he said, well, it was completely different, and it was not the same analogy. So, which just showed me that it is, it's a challenging concept, and that there are a lot of voters out there who do not see it this way. And both Barbara and Mark felt that their voters would be very angry about this, they feel that they're contributing a lot more than that, and they didn't want to anger their voters who have supported the budget, and so it, so there was that one argument. Curtis also brought up the point that, you know, we should all be working together to bring students into our region, and we looked at all the different tuitions and the numbers, and Mark pointed out the fact that with the incentives that Burnham and the town of Bridgewater provide, the current rate of 7,500 is already brought down to 5,000, and that doesn't seem to be, you know, making a difference. The students that we do have, the bulk of our students' tuition in are at the middle school, and they are paying the 7,500. We also talked about the tuition, out-of-district tuitions in some of the other surrounding towns, Bob provided for us. The K-8 out-of-district tuition for New Milford is 11,000, for Litchfield, it's 9,600, for Watertown, 11,400, Region One, 14,500. So those were the only ones that he found, a lot of people, a lot of districts don't even take in out of, they don't really have a tuition in option. So, so those numbers were thrown around. We also talked about the fact that the tuition, for example, in Washington, at Ramsey or at Montessori is much greater, both are over $20,000 per student for the elementary levels. We didn't really talk about the high school level. So, so it's, I think it's a challenge, because a lot of people don't understand the empty-seat concept, and don't feel that it is fair to have parents from out-of-district paying such a reduced rate. That got me to thinking, Alan, about the point that you made a couple of weeks ago about how none, no one single taxpayer pays the full per-people cost that we each pay in as a taxpayer, and we share that, we share that cost. And I thought that was a good, a better way probably of explaining what we would be doing with these out-of-district students, because basically, we get to control whether they come, so we get to control whether there's an additional cost, and what we're really offering is, instead of tuition into our school, we're offering their parent to be, sort of, become one of our taxpayers. And I looked at the median house price of each of our three towns, and the mill rate of each of our three towns, and the average, well, so the range, so the tax that a Bridgewater resident would pay on the median house value is 5,400, in Roxbury, it's 5,800, and in Washington, it's 4,200. So, in essence, it seems that the, you know, 5,500 being sort of in the middle of those is sort of what the average taxpayer pays, so what we're, in essence, doing is allowing someone to become, to put themselves into this pool of taxpayers. I don't know if that helps explain the empty-seat thing, you know, as long as we're not incurring costs, we're allowing the parent to then add themselves to our pool of taxpayers and pay what an average taxpayer would pay, so that their child can sit in our otherwise empty seat that's not incurring any costs. I've always understood this concept, I don't know why, it is challenging, but I have seen firsthand how challenging this is, and the election that we had in Washington had very high voter turnout, one of the highest barring AgSTEM and the consolidated, like, the highest in 10 years. And there was a lot of conversation, and the tuitioning in was part of that conversation, and people don't understand why we allow people to pay $7,500 for a spot that is costing the taxpayers 30,000. So it's a challenge, and I think it's something that we have to work on. The only two other things I want to say is that while I was at the table, I asked the select people, I felt that this, the burden of explaining this is larger than the board. I feel that, you know, we need to work with the towns if we're going to do something like this, to bring students in, and we would need their support and help in explaining this to the taxpayers, and none of them were willing to do that. And I was surprised that Curtis didn't step in to do that, but since he was either confused or concerned about the AgSTEM analogy, maybe that was what was throwing him. But I think it's a little, it worries me as the board to get out ahead on this without the support of the select people trying to explain to the taxpayers how this is working and why this really is fair versus the full tuition. The only other thing that sort of came to mind is, because I am a board member for the region, and I worry about our ability to pass budgets, and I don't want to anger the taxpayers in the two towns that passed our budget, they're the ones who are not supporting this, yet they supported our schools by approving our budget, and that's really important. I don't know how many students, we haven't brought in very many students, I would not, I'm concerned about taking a chance on reducing the tuition and enraging the other two towns and jeopardizing future budgets on the chance that we might bring in a couple of students. So that's one of my own concerns that was not brought up at the meeting of the three select, with the three selectmen, so.
Thank you, Michelle.
Sure.
Peter?
Bob, I have a question for you. There's a, I think you once mentioned, there's a net operating cost and a gross operating cost per student, is that correct? Could you give us the numbers?
Peter, I didn't bring it with me, but the gross is close to $30,000 in debt.
14 to 15?
Bob, can you speak up, please?
Peter, the gross is close to $30,000, just straight division through.
On your net.
And the net number is, I didn't bring it with me, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood, about 24,000 to 25,000 right now. Because you have to back out certain costs to get to that number.
I mentioned to Anthony before, I thought this was a bad public relations move, to put a number like 5,000 on the table, and Michelle, I think, confirmed that. The three towns have been negligent in addressing the problem. Washington built one affordable housing project, filled it, but there's no backup. Bridgewater and Roxbury haven't made any significant efforts for housing, and it is housing and jobs that draw families into your towns. I mean, that's what, that's the way I got here, and that's the way many of the parents who use the school system got here. The town has to be affordable, and in Washington, I can say, we've become unaffordable, our per-acre price is somewhere 40,000, 50,000, land across the road from me, 10 acres, so for a million and a half dollars. These are what's behind the problem. So the question is, on one hand, there's blank spaces in many of our classes throughout the whole system. You could plug kids in for nothing, and you wouldn't feel the effect initially, but in the end, I think you will. And while I'm interested in improving population, I'd like to hear some legitimate ways, I think the problem is, as long as you don't do what's necessary to get families into town, how do you ever fill up your school system? If you're going to lower your numbers, and the primary level wouldn't even be enough, you need kids in the middle and high school, you need kids throughout our entire system. So we do need a plan to grow the system. AgSTEM is one component, but you need more than AgSTEM, because our problem isn't the primary level, which feeds the middle-high school, and that's what has to happen. And I don't think 5,000 a student is going to solve that problem. We have about 214 students scheduled to enter the primary school system next year, I think the superintendent gave us that figure, 214. When you consolidate that, that's 36 kids per grade. That means in seven, eight years, you're going to have about 35, 36 kids per grade. That means in seven, eight years, you're going to have about 35, 36 kids per grade in your middle school, barring any kids from outside the system like Sherman. That's about 250, 60 kids in a building designed for 900, 1,000, 1,100. So even with AgSTEM, you pump it up another 140 or 50, 130, whatever it is, you're under 500. I mean, this is a big problem. And it isn't our fault. The board didn't create the problem. We're trying to solve a problem that the towns created and the economy created and the legislature created. And I agree with Michelle, if you put down a number legitimately, maybe legitimately you could feed kids in the system, like I said, for even nothing. I think it's going to have a very adverse effect on the board when it comes to expenditures we're going to need to make for even AgSTEM. You know, the, listening to Greg during the meeting, we have to spend a considerable amount of money and do a lot of things that AgSTEM is going to affect in this building. So I'd like to hear it. I'd go for a different number. If you want to put a different number on the table you think would work, I'd be willing to maybe buy into it. But I think five is really pushing the, I think pushing the umbrella.
Bob, if I may, do you know the current Sherman tuition rate?
Yes, I do, Jim. You have the microphone.
And these are high school students.
582.
It's right here somewhere.
276. July 1st, so 582.
All right, the superintendent gave it to me.
She's quicker than I am.
It's, it's currently $12,276.
Right.
And on July 1 of this year, it'll increase to $12,582.
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? Okay, thank you. Michael.
I was listening to what Michelle was saying very carefully because I wasn't part of that meeting. And I guess what, what disturbs me most, most is that it seems that both the first selectmen of Roxbury and Washington, that their biggest concern wasn't that it doesn't make sense financially, or that it wouldn't work, or that it might not even be good. But their biggest concern was politically what the ramifications would be in their respective towns and how difficult, if not impossible, from their perspective, their job would be in trying to communicate that. And I have, I have a number of concerns about that. First of all, we don't have to go back too far in the past to look at issues like AgSTEM, which we as a board knew all along would require quite a bit of education, quite a bit of information. And we would still anticipate a, a measure of skepticism, a measure of people who would reject our thinking. And so if, if we were brave enough to move forward with AgSTEM, I'd love for us to be thinking outside the box at the elementary level where I think the need is even more dire right now. I think we all acknowledge that. You don't have to be a, a math major to look at the numbers and be really, really concerned. I, I think the other concern that I have is that we're, as a community, the, the town of Bridgewater is trying desperately to keep our elementary school a vital, alive elementary school. And I think that this is definitely outside the box. I mean, obviously, the research that you've done, looking at what area towns charge, it's not something that's typically done, lowering the tuition rate. That seems to be the, kind of like the thinking that would be more in the private level, not the public level. And, and I understand that. But, you know, from the, the work that a number of people in Bridgewater have done, it seems that there is a level of confidence that we could get the students that we would need to make our elementary school more robust in terms of number of students. While at the same time acknowledging that we're not asking for hiring of extra teachers to fill classes that are composed primarily of out of district students. That's not what we've asked for. What we've asked for is we have seats available in a classroom, we have a teacher there, why not make use of it? So it seems that as a board, we, we understand at least the logic. And so now we're, we're putting politics ahead of what might be best for certainly the students in, in Bridgewater and potentially the students in every one of our elementary schools. Because. I didn't know my voice was that powerful. Again, if we, if we're looking at the trends, we're going back to Peter Prado's numbers, we're not going to be too far away, folks, from all three of our elementary schools being in the same boat. And it'll be really interesting to see if the concerns that the town of Bridgewater has right now because of our dire situation will be echoed. And in a few years, people in Washington and Roxbury will be as interested in trying outside the box thinking as we are right now. So I would just ask you to, to think of that.
Anyone else? Alan?
Well, thanks, Michelle, for that. You clearly have been thinking about this and did a full analysis of what everybody said. And I think it's interesting that, you know, even, even, from what you said, even Mark pointed out that you already have 7,500, it's not doing anything. And I, I mean, I heard this through Curtis in a different way, but it's, same point is that it didn't make a difference. It wasn't working.
Well, that, that part was the reduction.
Right.
The additional reduction.
Exactly. And that's, and that's, if you recall, when I introduced this a couple of weeks ago, the, the 5,000 was because of this whole conversation with Gronbeck, was that 2,500 would be a, a, a great number. And to get to that, the same reductions that are going from 7,500 to 5,000 would bring it from 5,000 to 2,500 because of the Burnham PTO and town additions. So that 2,500 is something that might have more effect. But, but similar to what, what Michael said, I think it's unfortunate that, it was unfortunate that in the meeting, I guess, that Barbara and Mark couldn't be convinced or couldn't understand the, the way the numbers work and be convinced of its value. Because that would be the first step towards them wanting to do the hard work of helping to convince their electorate. I mean, I, I do feel that it's, 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 as I said last time, you know, it's, it's misconceptions that people have that is why this would be dangerous to passing a budget. It's really only misconceptions because what this does was, is this gives towns money. And I like that you pointed out that you're, I didn't realize this as far as, you know, the way I always talk about taxes, you know, I always tend to, to go from the bottom to the top and whether someone has children or not. And, you know, you have these mansions that two, that a couple with no kids live in and then you have a small house with six kids. And, but the way you did it, you did it by mean or median or however you figured it out. And so that 5,000 is very close to the median. So that you're, we're actually inviting new taxpayers. But I, I think the, the issue is that, is that this is what could be, it could be, you know, if, if it does work out, then it's worth it and then we have the success to, and the, the happy feelings to explain to the unhappy taxpayers why this is a good thing all around. If it doesn't work out and it still doesn't draw anybody, well, it's not going to be, no one is taking us up on this thing which would enrage taxpayers. So, I, I, and I think, I think finally I have to look at something very interesting. We all got the copy that Valerie sent out of the, it was a very long PDF, but it was a spreadsheet that showed the expenditures for each of the school buildings and how the budget is broken down across the buildings. And, you know, the first thing I saw, of course, as everyone did, I think, is we go down to the bottom of the last page and, almost to the bottom, and we see, you know, the different per pupil costs. And how, of course, as we've known for years, Burnham's is the highest. But what was pointed out to me was something I had, I don't think any of us have ever noticed. And I think some of this can offset, from what I heard, was a little bit of, an unpleasant reaction to this from Mark and Barbara. Because, you know, the perception of our school being the most, having the lowest population and the highest per pupil cost is this perception that, you know, the other towns are footing the bill for this expensive school. And that sets the other town governments off on this kind of rather offended and defensive position of, you know, why should we help these people out and all they're doing is costing us money? But if you look at this, what's very interesting is that Burnham is actually the cheapest school in the district to run. And its, its costs of 1.4 and some odd change million dollars are 6.9% of the annual budget. So this is kind of like, you know, Trump cutting PBS. It's like, we worry about this tiny little number here with this political rancor and this, this towns fighting amongst each other and this whole concept, concept of who are these people who keep asking these things of us? When I believe that, and now I'm speaking as a board member, I believe that we have as, as, as a board and as a, as a regional entity, we have the room to be generous because it's a tiny part of the budget. And even that generosity I'm talking about is not actual monetary because as we know, this tuition in concept would actually draw people in and give money to the taxpayers. So if anything, what this does, and I don't know whether, I, I think the way we do this is we never count tuition in numbers, so it probably doesn't actually affect this. But if we get to this, because it's 1.4 million dollars spread around, spread across 40 children only, that's where we get to the 37,000. And I think legitimately and legally and however we process, we never add tuition in kids to that. But if it helps with the concepts for, for an enraged populace, if we add four kids and you divide that number by 44 and that, and that per pupil cost goes down. As I said, I don't think technically it's allowed to, but if we want to do it, if we want to figure it that way. So, so I really feel that this is, if, if the big hurdle is to enlighten taxpayers, to hopefully smooth the feathers of the, of Roxbury and Washington's first selectmen so that they will feel more inclined to help us and inform taxpayers as opposed to take their side and be enraged with them. I think this is something that, if it works, would be a model for what's coming down the pike for the other schools. And if it doesn't work, it's not going to help or cost anybody anything. And I think, because we're on thin ice here, I would make the motion for $5,000 for K5 and not for K12 because let's not push it while we're at it. For, for the, yeah, K5 classes only.
Is there a second? Michael seconds. Anthony? So there's a motion on the table to, to charge $5,000, I assume, starting in the 2017, 18 school year for K through five district wide, subject to some restriction that it would be subject to the superintendent's acceptance of the student. Is that right, Alan?
Yeah.
The policy we have, all right.
Yeah, the current policy was.
Double or triple checked when we put the 7,500 into effect, so I believe that it protects us as it stands.
All right. Anthony?
All right, sorry. So I would, I'm, I'm glad you didn't go to the K12 because just doing, you know, besides the fact that we have a contract with Sherman, we would be, I don't even see how we could, we could go to Sherman and say, we're going to low, we're going to take 12, 5 down to 5. That's, that's only $200,000 more in our budget. And this is hard enough, having this discussion, when there's no real incremental cost. That would be a, a hard dollar impact. So I, I wasn't prepared to support that tonight. So if, in the future, as we think about our tuition, you know, we will certainly have opportunity to have a lot more discussion about what our tuition rates could be, should be, and will be. So thanks for, for not doing that. Two, the, just to be clear, we're talking about the fact that we would do this under the conditions because the 7,500 tuition, I think from a control standpoint, says that the superintendent has to approve each student that comes into the district. Is that correct?
Yes. We, the, um, may I?
Yes.
The principals first meet with the family, interview the child, look at transcripts, et cetera. And once they approve it, then it comes to me and then I do an internal with class sizes and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay. But, but there's no restriction in terms of the decision criteria as it's currently written, right? Because we're not, with respect to costs to the district, right?
Right.
Right. In this proposal, I thought we had talked once before that we said we were going to do this, and I think Michael had, had said this earlier, that we would do this under the condition that we wouldn't be adding any incremental costs to the current budget. So that would be in addition to whatever is written someplace, right? As part of this, Pat? That if you see that we're going to incur costs, you have the right to say no?
That's, that's one of the criteria.
Yes, I have the right to say no.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's written in the policy. I can check on that.
But you have the right to say no based on cost.
It is. Oh, wait, there's, the policy administrator is saying yes, it is in there. Yes. And I, I don't, because I didn't remember the way the language had to do with.
And furthermore, I believe that if, if, let's say there was a, a student applying for a position to go to the Burnham School and the superintendent and the principal at Burnham felt that the class was large enough and that that would require an additional teacher, they would say no, but they could also say, we do however have some availability at either Booth Free or at Washington Primary.
Okay. I, I think it's a, it's an important point to make sure that we're all clear on as we, as we go forward so we don't have sort of collective amnesia at some point in the future when we're looking at the, this, this parent that we need to say no to because we might be on a tripwire for an additional teacher or whatever. And I'm not talking about incidentals like books and things like, because this 5,000 certainly would cover that. It's the bigger issues, right, Michael? And I, it's, it's better we say it twice, three times now and not at some point in the future when it's beginning to become very uncomfortable for, for people. My, my last point, I would suggest that we do this as well for, for a year and we revisit this a year later and see what kind of results we've gotten, what the market's like and, and decide whether or not we want to continue it again for another year.
Alan, would you amend your motion? I would like to have the language specifically that, as long as there is no incremental cost to the region.
Oh, well.
For a period of one year, subject to review after that.
Well, hang on. The incremental cost, that, that is covered by the policy already. But with one thing we have to be concerned about for the year, and we can either be, we can either amend the language or we can really amend the language. Because if you think about it, if we have a family that comes in and puts a child in, in Burnham for, start with kindergarten, starting with second grade or third grade, and then they're told next year that, no, they're changing the price back, then that could be, if it's not economically possible for that family, it could be really disruptive to that child. So the way we always do things with Sherman is their contracts are for five years, I think it is. I'm not sure why it's not four years, but they're, aren't they, they roll out, or is it the bus? It's three years, but you guarantee the bus for five years, however we did it last time. And that's to make sure that people know when they're, they're saying, hey, we get, we get to come to, to Region 12 for 5,000, that the rug's not going to be pulled out from them next year, even if we do investigate. So in other words, if, if, if you're comfortable, if you really want to, to maintain, you know, hold of the reins for this next year, that we would be dropping it, say, to, or changing it back up, or whatever we do to it next year, wouldn't apply to people who had already taken advantage of the, of the opportunity. Because that could be disruptive to them. So, you know, I, I, I think that the, the protection about incremental costs is already in here because it says, and it's very blanket and it covers everything. The superintendent or his or her designee may terminate enrollment at any time wherein his or her pen, oh, I'm sorry, that's the terminate, that's not the, that's not the part where they come in. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the terminate, that's not the, that's not the part where they come in. Hang on a second. Sorry, folks, I'm trying to find the language here.
I would be much
Ah, I'm sorry. "Non-serviced staff, if class size and other considerations such as the adequacy and availability of resources permit discussion, decisions regarding class size and/or..."
Let's face it, if for some reason you opened the doors at 5,000 and you had wild success and you had 20 kids come in, and the next year you suddenly had a situation where people moved to the district or anything and you got to that point where it was clear that the following year you were going to exceed and create incremental costs and have to hire another teacher, at that point in time, the superintendent would be able to take people who had been admitted the previous year and say, I'm sorry, we can't have you back this year. And so the thing is, you're not guaranteed anything. And if we start, I, I'm telling you, this becomes a black box into which every time you tweak one thing, something else pops out, you tweak something else, and I, I, I just think this needs some more thought.
No, actually, Greg, you're absolutely right, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but actually this is also covered in policy, and I'm sorry that I didn't know this. "Non-resident attendants shall be for one school year or less. Non-resident attendants may be extended from year to year at the discretion of the superintendent or his or her designee. Application for initial and continued enrollment shall be made in writing on a form supplied by the superintendent or his or..." So all of our concerns are already covered. It's already one year and the costs are covered. So I really think, you know, I mean, we can stipulate all this stuff in our, in our motion, but I'm not sure it's necessary because this policy is, is pretty well ironclad and I don't think either Jim or Greg's concerns, you know, I, I don't think, you know, as I said, I'm sorry I didn't know this to begin with, but I think your concerns are already taken care of here.
Can we, Jim, in the form of the motion, could we, rather than have it, literally have to change the policy, address your, your request?
I, I am not comfortable voting on the motion at the current, as currently stated, I'm asking that the motion be amended specifically include language that says there shall, whatever you said, that there shall be no incremental cost.
And my, my question was, if, if the motion had that language in it, would we also then be required to go back and do a policy revision? Or does the motion supplement the policy in this regard?
I guess we would probably have to go back and do a policy revision.
But the policy already says it, I think with the motion, you just want a motion to state the inherent value of the policy, I guess. Which is fine, you want to be redundant, fine.
The policy that you read, excuse me, I'm sorry, does not specifically state what Anthony said. It says that she has, the superintendent has discretion over certain items. In my reading, a superintendent could decide, yes, there'll be an incremental cost, but I'm going to allow you to come anyway. Under that policy, you could. I'm trying to eliminate that possibility. Bob, did you have some?
I'm just concerned because we do currently have pre-K students. And all your motion is talking about right now is K to 5.
Exactly.
So, you know, I just wanted to be sure we cover that aspect of it, so we know what to bill going into, uh, next year if you change it.
It's just K-5, so don't worry about those pre-K students.
Pre-K would still stay at the 7,500.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
Well, we know because we don't want more kids in pre-K, we need them in, in K through 5.
Why would we not want them in pre-K?
Because it's full already and K-5 isn't.
It's the airline seat analogy, I'm not sure it works in, in reach if, if they're full. We'd have to buy another airplane.
I didn't think we were that full.
Peter?
Did you speak to the board's attorney at all about
Oh, for God's
this concept? I don't know whether it would even be necessary to, but are there any aspects of this?
About tuition rates?
Yeah, about tuition rates, right.
No, I did not speak to the board's attorney about tuition rates.
Would it really be necessary from your perspective? I don't know, it just sounds like we're stepping into Pandora's Box. And I understand Bridgewater's problem, I don't blame them for their problem. We may all have that problem eventually, it's a very good possibility we will all be faced with this problem. But I don't see public relations doing us any favor when it comes to the time when taxpayers recognize what we're doing and we want to do other things, we're dealing with the AgStem program now. There are going to be additional costs to the AgStem program for sure, listening to Grave at the facilities meeting, uh, facilities meeting today. There's a lot of things we don't know what's going to happen with AgStem yet, relevant to construction. So, I don't know, I just think it's a wonderful concept, but I think it's really bad public relations. I think we'll pay for it in our budget. I really do.
Could I just correct something there?
Yes.
I, I didn't say that there are costs in AgStem that we don't know, that's not correct, Pete. I don't think you, listen, I don't think you read me correctly what I said. Because I did not say there were AgStem costs we didn't know. We were talking tonight about non-AgStem related costs
That's what I mean.
that other things in the building may need to be repaired that are not part of that project. That's, that's, that was the discussion we had. But I don't, I don't want to give the impression to anyone that there's any doubt about what the AgStem costs are.
Anthony?
With respect to the larger issue about the optics of, and there isn't any good way to truly put sort of a smile on, on, on the numbers when you, when you do do the straight math at 30-something thousand dollars a kid. I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it's a tough number to sort of wrap your mind around, at least emotionally. But when I was talking to Valerie a couple of weeks ago on this subject, we were talking in, in, in terms of needing, to Pete's point, to do a better job sort of the public relations aspect of understanding our budget, to the extent that it, that it plays, I, I don't know, but pretending and trying to deal with these problems on the eve of an election or on the eve of a conversation like this, it's really, really tough in my mind to, to try to get people comfortable with understanding these numbers. I think it's something that we, we have to and should start thinking about doing on a regular basis because we're so small that an uninformed public, it, it's not fair to them and it's quite frankly not fair to us or the administration to have to deal with some of these things. So if you look at this budget and you chunk this budget down, Alan, you could take this onion and peel it back one layer further and say, it may be, let's say, a million dollars a year to operate Burnham, but you look at that and say, well, how much is, 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 you know, it's, it's, what's truly fixed in the period? If the period is, is, is 10, you know, is, is, is a year, there's a different answer to that question. If the period is, is a quarter or a day, is a different answer to that question. So in other words, if the building costs X to be there, then, and, and that's not what I would say is a controllable cost, I'm not even sure, so the million dollars in my point, and this applies to all the schools, could be overstated. The real variable cost is, are the teachers, the staff that's, that goes into the building every day and the fuel you use to heat it. You know, so when you look at, again, how do you want to look at it? How do you want to explain what it really costs to operate a given school without taking a binary move, which is closing the building? Or doing something like that? So even these numbers is giving us more visibility. But I, I would suggest to the, to the board going forward that we should think about how we cast these numbers, how we talk about these numbers, but do it, do it more often than we do it today and do it with more transparency than we've probably ever done it before as a district, because I think we have to. It's not that there's something to be hidden, there's no magic going on here. It's just explaining to people, for example, special needs is, what is it? $4 million a year in our district? Is, what is, what is that? Why is that? Do the average people even appreciate on a percentage basis what that means, the impact it has to the, to the district? So that would be where I would go. And then I think this conversation will be even a little bit easier. I think it's still going to be tough, but it'll be a little bit easier. Because you're never going to square it with $33,000. Never.
But remember, as an imaginary number, you have to
I, I totally agree with what you're saying. I, I think that, you know, if we're looking at ourselves on this, there, there's a lot of work to be done with communication. And it shouldn't just be at budget time, I agree with you, or at election time. I think it's, it's, it's going to require a lot of effort on all of our parts, probably year-round. Not just the board, but the administration and teachers as well. Because let's face it, education is not, we're, we're not a for-profit proposition, you know? And there's so many things in education that if we just looked at it from a cost perspective, we would probably say, it doesn't make sense. So for example, we have AP courses that we offer here that sometimes have enrollments of eight, 10 kids in them. I mean, if, if Kim Gallo just said, well, that's too low, let's cut it, sorry. It's too expensive what you're, what you're doing right now. We don't make those kinds of decisions in education, thank God. There are private schools that do make those kinds of education, but we don't. And so what is the value of robust elementary schools to us as a district? What is the value of a robust high school? I mean, to me, those, there's more to our budget than what's the cost of electricity. There's much more to our budget than that. So we've got to calculate that in our calculus in terms of what's, what, what are we really doing for our district and our students to support them in the best way that we can, without being foolish?
Peter?
Move the question.
Go ahead, Alan. I, I need to make Jim comfortable before I make you comfortable, Pete. I've been thinking about this, part of it is that I'm just trying to get the words right. I'd like to amend my motion so that, my motion is to reduce the tuition for K-5 students for the upcoming 2017-2018 school year only to, in the amount of $5,000 with the, what's the legal word? With the
Caveat.
Caveat, thank you. That the region does not, as a result, incur any additional costs.
Is there a second to that? Alright, it's been moved in second, is there anything else?
Yeah, how could you do that? Can you do that?
Do, how can we do what?
Repeat his motion, listen to it. Listen to the motion.
The motion is to reduce the cost that we charge for non-resident K through 5 students starting 2017-18 school year to $5,000 per person as long, with the policies that we already have, subject to the superintendent's discretion, and in addition, that there be no additional cost to the region.
How do you know there isn't going to be any additional cost?
You can't hire another teacher to, to, to facilitate a non-resident student, for example.
So we're going to tell people, you're going to send your kids here, but if you send them here, we don't, we have to supply with a teacher, you can't come here.
It's the superintendent's decision and that's one of the, the guidelines that they'll be guided by as to whether or not that student's admitted.
Okay, I'm just asking the questions.
Alright. Stephanie?
So the way that's worded now, it's implicit that we'll review this again at the end of next year.
That's already in the policy. It's a, you're
Got it, okay.
Anything else?
Do I have another question?
Yes, Peter.
So, in other words, we're, a, a student comes in
A student applies.
Student applies, you take the student in for whatever the number is, 5,000. And then next year, the student's going to, that student is in.
Not necessarily, it's only for a year at a time. Go ahead, yes.
In April, we send a reminder letter to the parents and to the principals
Right.
for parents who have kids out of, at, that don't live here, that pay tuition. If they'd like to have their children in our school the following year, they have to write me a letter requesting for their child to stay another year. And then I send them a letter saying, yes, your child can remain, or no, your child cannot. At this point, we have not had to say no to anyone. But every year, they have to ask.
And what would be the reason you would say no?
If, if there was, say, for example, somebody wanted to come into, say, for example, somebody's in WPS, because that's where our bigger classes are, and there are 20 students. They're the 20th. I say, okay, 20, I can let you in. And then two kids move into that grade who live in Washington, and now I have 21 kids. I could say, I'm sorry, your child cannot go to Washington Primary, but they could go to Burnham or Booth.
Just sounds whacked up to me, that's all I can say.
Anyone else? Yes. Lisa?
How many students do we currently have that are tuitioned in?
I can tell you that. Do you have my numbers?
I'm going to tell you for next year, okay, because that's what counts. Next year, there are zero kids in elementary. We thought we had one in Booth Free, but that child is moving. So there are zero kids tuitioning in, non-resident, in Burnham, Booth, and Washington. And next year, there are seven students who will be tuitioning in at Chapag.
At what rate? And what, what's the tuition for them?
Well, tuition right now is $7,500.
Even for high school?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
No.
Middle or high?
No, middle school.
It's, well, let me say this, right now, it's $7,500 for everybody. Bridgewater has a nice incentive program where they give the families $2,500. So if you live in, if you're going to Burnham and you ask for the incentive and you qualify, you are then paying us $7,500, but the town and the PTO are giving you an incentive.
So won't those other families who are being tuitioned in or at the high school, middle school level, want that same reduction?
They've asked for it, we've gotten a letter from them asking for it, but the motion is K through 5.
Right, but once it's out there, how do you then tell those families no? Okay, it, it's just, again, opening up Pandora's Box, I think.
Michelle?
Alright, two things, I get, first, I think the middle school, high school is a, is a different ballgame. It's, it's structured differently because the students are moving around class to class. It's not as a strict cutoff line for the class size as it is in the elementaries for the K-5. So I think that's easier to explain and that also just, I think allows me to just say this one thing that I was sort of discovering when I was doing a little research. And I feel it ties in with what Anthony was saying, is we need to do a better job about talking about this, but because I was looking at the tuitions that are charged at, at other schools. For example, the Montessori school, it, it increases as the children get older. So there's examples of that happening. And the day schools, for example, Rumsey goes up to ninth grade and that's 26,000. But as soon as you get to high school, I just wanted to share that the Gunnery, for the, for a day student is 42,900. Canterbury is 41,900. And Chase is 38,500. So when you put our high school in, into that realm and Gunnery is similar in size to us and yet we have to provide transportation and we have to take students with special needs and they don't, it makes our 30,000 look a lot different and, and puts it into a, a frame of conversation that I, I think makes a lot more sense. So that was just something I wanted to throw out. I also will just wanted to say that I appreciate the two changes to the motion because I feel that by reiterating the one-year trial and the fact that the region will not incur incremental cost in the motion, I, I think, and the fact that we don't have currently any students using this option. I, I feel that I can go back and, and speak with Mark about this. He understands the concept, it's not that he doesn't understand it, he just gets a lot of pushback on it. So, 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 and, and same with Barbara. They, they under, they get it because they talk about it and come to meetings. It's just that the pushback that we get. But I just, I, I'm, you know, hearing what Peter says and, and based on, on the recent conversations I've had in town, I think the limits that we put on the motion will help the conversation. But I, I don't want the conversation to get away from the board. I'm worried about future budgets and I would appreciate support in our, in our school budgets because losing a school budget, having that go down and having to go back and cut teachers on the risk of hopefully bringing in one or two students, that's, 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 that's a gamble. You know, and, and we need to make sure we're doing a good job as a school board, explaining these costs and the fact that there are no incremental costs with these students. But we just need to be cognizant of that all around because the, the school budget is something I, weighs heavily on me.
Yes, Anthony, Peter, he's going to move the question again, go ahead.
I know. What's the tuition cost for the staff again?
It is 5% of whatever the tuition is.
Right, right, right.
How was that set? We might want to revisit that. That might want, we might want to revisit that.
Is there anything else? I just want to say that I'm gonna support this motion. I, I really am interested in attempting to help Bridgewater and the, the Burnham School. But I will say that threats of being sued by the town of Bridgewater against the region do not help. They do not help me considering these things. Alright, all those in favor, the motion, in favor of the motion made by Alan, seconded by Michael, raise your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand. Any abstain, raise your hand. What's the count? Yes, we're missing two. Valerie and we have an, that's correct. Alright, the motion passes. Alright, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss, it should be brief, an attorney-client privileged opinion? Your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We're in executive session at 9:20, we'll take a five-minute break. It should be fairly brief.